Welcome, everyone, to the May 19 City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone here and those at home. And before we start our first item, I just want to say congratulations to Alan and to Mike and to George, who's on the phone down there. George, congratulations.
It was a hard fight, he said.
He's probably got it on mute.
Yes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
You're welcome, and congratulations to Pat Farr, wherever he is, too. So we seem to already know who all of our councilors are going to be the next go-round. All right. And then I promised to do this, and it's out of line the way we usually do things, but I'll just keep, I said I would keep on doing it, and I'm going to, which is to say how much I don't enjoy walking down the street and seeing the aftermath of the night before's activities on the, on the street downtown, and how important I think it is that we find a way to address that. I sent you all an email about that and asked for your help with that, so I'm going to continue to do that, because I think it's just, we shouldn't be walking downtown at noon and still see the residuals from last night's bar activities all over our downtown streets, so I am...
Wants to be, brings, grab buckets and rooms?
I think...
Do you want us to do that?
We can discuss this at another time, but personally, I believe that there's a responsibility on the part of the owners of the facilities, of the businesses adjoining those sidewalks, and that we need to ask them to step up and do their part. Anyway, the first item on the work session agenda this afternoon is the I-5 Willamette River Bridge, and looking forward to this discussion.
Yeah, so I'm just going to invite Dick Upton and Chris Henry up to the table, and we'll just launch into that presentation.
And thank you very much. It's very, very good to be here. And I'm going to assume that everyone has the packet handout, and really, I'm going to use that as kind of the basis for me to talk through. And this is just a little primer. What I'll first talk about is something about the status of the project. Then I want to launch into the part that's kind of fun for me and talk about our, the way that we've been working with stakeholders on this project. And I think we're in a relatively unique position, and it's been a unique opportunity, and it's been a heck of a ride so far, and look forward to continuing. And then after I talk about the stakeholders, wanted to talk through some of the things that we have done together with the stakeholders, and just how, how it is to seize an opportunity and work through it, as it's really been as a community. So that'll be kind of the backbone of what I talk about, and I guess launching right into the status update. First, I did put in a little background information about the project. Current cost estimate, $154 million. Total proj, or that's for construction, total project, about $201 million. For us, the, what's called the CMGC contracting approach, which is construction manager, general contractor, is, is unique, interesting, and exciting. Fundamentally, what it does is allow us, allows us to bring in the contractor who will build the bridge in, at the beginning of design, and so that they're with us all through design with constructability reviews and advisories on how they might approach a piece of work that might affect design. One of the, one of the points of the project that I'm kind of proud of is it is a local project being done by local firms. Obeck, who's based out of Eugene, been here for, I think, 30, 40 years, they're our lead engineer. And then Hamill Construction, who's, I understand, been in the area, grew up in Springfield for the last 50 years. And so it's very fortunate that we were able to bring the local firms and their sense of pride to the project. And as I mentioned, there's a heightened community engagement that I'll really get into later, but there were some unique opportunities around this project, having to do with some of the funding that we received, and frankly, I would say, unique statewide, because Eugene cares. That's, and, and that's a very positive, positive statement. Anyway, so just regarding status of the project, I think one of the more convenient ways to look at it is that there's kind of four big sweeping stages. Last summer, we completed stage one, which was to put the temporary bridges and the construction facilities in place. The other stages that we look at is, is the northbound, all of the bridges and all of the roadwork for, excuse me, southbound is first. That's what we're working on right now. Picked that up last fall, and we anticipate completing in the fall of 2011. Then we move into the next stage, which would be the northbound side of the freeway. And again, that looks like it'll pick up fall of '11 and complete fall of 2013. And then the fourth and final stage would be really the work beneath the bridge. It's cleaning up in the park and doing the enhancements and path improvements that we've agreed to down in there. So those are the big stages, and about when they ought to roll out, when we look at our expenditures on the project, we're about 90% expended on our design budget, and that's consistent with about where we are with design. Around construction, we show that we're about 20% expended. About 10% of that so far has been around the temporary facilities. So on the bridge itself, and the permanent work itself, we're into about 10% at this point. And the next slide shows a current view, as of two days ago, I guess, that would be, it's kind of a myopic view, but it does demonstrate the detour bridge in the background, and in the foreground, you see the temporary works. And if you look real close, under the bridge, under the temporary bridge to the left to center, is a thing we call a cofferdam, and that, we use that to hold the water out of our work area. And kind of about in the middle of the slide, there's these two little steel cage looking things coming up, and that's part of the permanent work. Those will be columns that support the main structure. And so that's what it looks like right about now. And that, kind of turning the page into really the engagement with the community and really making the bridge about the community. I don't know that we sat down at the start of our design process and wrote these goals down, but I would say, very quickly, we evolved into really guiding principles or goals around the projects, around the project. And one of the, the things that struck us, and the things that our partners, local partners on the project pointed out, is, is the uniqueness and specialness of this location. We've got the river and a natural resource flowing through there. We've got the Willamette Natural Area on the north bank, and that's a special and unique gem in any community. We've got on the, on the south bank, a major transportation corridor. It's, we recognize it's a very unique place, and that the improvements that we made needed to fit into that context. And based on our ability to listen, I might say, we, we really determined early on that fitting into that context was not about ODOT's perspective, it was about the community perspective. And so we did something relatively unique with this project. Typically, in an environmental development phase, we have community groups that advise us, and once we move into design, the role drops off substantially. In fact, generally, they dissolve. And in this project, what we elected to do is to continue those community groups on, and they'll be with us literally through ribbon cutting, and I very much look forward to that. And so we are working very hard to, and working hard with the community, with our partners, to make the bridge and the surrounding area in the, in the context as viewed from the community. And another unique thing that just started evolving, because things came up and opportunities came up, and, and we really collectively worked at ways to extend, you know, take things that I needed to do on the project and make them bigger than just meeting the requirements that I needed to meet on the project. And I've got some examples of that here in a minute. And so the next slide, top part and the bigger print is, is kind of the project structure to, at least at the level I'll talk to it. And I've got a project management team that's made primarily of ODOT people, and it's our responsibility to keep the thing going and, you know, maintain and deliver the project that we're supposed to deliver. Then when, in terms of structure, as, as we look at our community groups, I've got what we call a project development team. That's primarily our jurisdictional partners. Chris Henry is on that group, and we've got representatives from the county and the city of Springfield. Believe we have citizen representation on the group, and then a fair number of ODOT folks on the group. And so they're one of our links to the community, but it's really at the citizens advisory group level that we're looking at neighborhood associations. The CPC has representation. We have citizens at large. We look to, and that was a group that was set up really in the environmental phase and is, is carrying through, but it's in that group that I think we really get ourselves rooted in the community. And they have become pivotal as we approach decision-making, as we approach issues that we need to work. It's really the citizens advisory committee where we as staff feed the information and frame the issues and frame the question and provide the data, and the recommendation for direction emanates out of that citizens group. And then fundamentally, it ratchets up through the other two groups. And one of the promises that I've made really to my, my, or citizens on the team, that as long as the recommendations that they provide are within the scope that we need to accomplish, don't interrupt or cause problems with schedule or budget, and I added a layer about we can't violate ODOT policy, as long as our decisions fit that framework, I'm not going to countermand any. And so, so far, that's working quite well, and I apologize.
We have a policy.
Okay.
He brings pizza next time.
Okay, I'll bring the pizza. I'm good. And anyway, the bottom half of the page, the small print, it's just intended to represent all of the places and ways that the project has reached out and tried to connect with and get information and input from other parts of the community. And so I think early on, I mentioned that I wanted to talk about opportunities that we've, we've taken advantage of and made something of. And this next page has a kind of a longer list, or a medium-long list. It doesn't represent all the things. Every day, we make little decisions that make a difference in count, but when I think of some of the bigger things that we've done, this is a representative list, and some of them aren't very well fleshed out, but the ones in bold are the ones that I, I really wanted to just pause on and kind of tell a little story about. And I think in each of these stories is, is what I would call a good indicator of how we're working on the project. And the first one around a bicycle pedestrian, what is now a bicycle pedestrian viaduct on the south bank, one of the requirements, I guess I'd call it a requirement that ODOT agreed to, as, as we're working in the park, we're impacting bicycle paths, and our agreement is that we will put back anything that we damage or remove, we'll put it back. When we look on the south bank of the Willamette River, the bicycle path that is in place right now loops down under Franklin Boulevard, under the bridge, and then it kind of just peters out into Franklin Boulevard, and there's difficult connections, especially coming eastbound. And so in some of the early conversations we were having around this, I think it was actually Tom Boyott over in Springfield said, hey, you know, there, in all of the plans in the area, there's a plan to put a bicycle path on the north side, connect it into a future bicycle system in Springfield, but it connects and links to then the bicycle system in Eugene. And so that looked like an interesting thing to pursue. We costed out the viaduct, and that's what it ended up, we recognized that we need to build that on a viaduct to address environmental issues, stay out of the river. We priced that out, and the, and the cost was about $2.4 million. And, and so that wasn't something I can just add into a project because it's a good idea, for better or worse. But what I did is I took a look at and asked my engineers to give me a cost that I thought I would end up investing in restoring the path on the south side, or south of Franklin Boulevard, came up with about $1.6 million. Then Springfield and I, and I'm giving the short version, there was a lot of conversation and sorting out what we could do, but we ended up going to the ODOT Bicycle Pedestrian Program and submitted a joint grant application for a million dollars to get the rest of the funding. And indeed, we scored very high, and they have a competition process around the funding that they, they normally get, and out of 30 applications, I think we were ranked number three. And so the idea of putting the viaduct there was also looked favorably upon in a statewide competition. We got the money, and now we're advancing with that viaduct. And so to me, that's just a great example of how, you know, we're working, all working together, somebody gets an idea, and, and we see what we can do. Another one, and this might be one of my, I guess I would say, one of my favorite ones, in our early planning, we recognized that we needed to, by the way, this is the west bank, western bank and slope slide is what this refers to, and we're looking at that cluster of trees. And early in our planning process, we recognized we needed to widen I-5 to the west, and, and we needed to widen by about 12 feet, and so our standard approach then is to just widen the whole embankment. And what that meant was that we needed to take that grove of trees out, and right now, that stand of trees is, is acting as just a wonderful barrier between the interstate and all that traffic and the park on the Eugene side that, that has the prees trail running right along the base of it, and, and the bike, bike trail right there. And so one of our citizens committee raised his hand, it was David Sonnixon, and said, well, is there some way we can save those trees? And he enunciated well the value of keeping those trees. And so we took that, not necessarily into committee, but we entered that into our discussions. And there was a bit of a serendipitous moment. On the, on the east side, in the Willamette Lane Park, we had agreed to and required to put a retaining wall to keep the fill out of Willamette Lane Park. And, and close to the same discussion, Willamette Lane was going, you know, that retaining wall looks like a graffiti magnet to us. Is there something else we can do over there? And so what I did is I estimated, or had my folks estimate, the cost of the wall on the east side, the cost of a wall to save the trees, and I got what looked like pretty close to a trade-out. And so we collectively made an agreement not to build the wall on the east side. Instead, we're going to do some recontouring and really end up providing a landscape that's more fitting with the, the natural area. And we can do that on the, on the east side and bring the wall over to the west side, and we have now saved the trees. And so again, that's just an example of an idea. We collectively looked around and did what we could, and, and I think did something very, very good. And then the last example is, is a little, you know, it's a little more obscure, but a little bigger, too. And that was a conversation that actually started before I, I got to the project, and it was a conversation about, excuse me, enhancements and what we call enhancements, and really making the area around the bridge as we left something, hesitate to use the word better than what it is now, but, but leave things that improve the area. The, the challenge in that was budget, and so one of the things that I knew was nested in our cost estimates in a number of places were what we, again, we call enhancements. It's just like putting patterns on the face of walls rather than smooth walls. It's doing similar things around embutments. It's just a number of things that we would normally design into a project. And so what, what the project team did, the, our engineers did, was went through and mined, what I call mined, our cost estimate for those items, and we came up with a dollar amount. And so we brought that back to our citizens advisory group and noted that these are the things ODOT would think to do for enhancements, and here's the cost of that. If you guys want to rethink that and, and do something different, we're wide open. And that conversation launched what is over a year-long process. We have design enhancement panels, we have arts, art and design teams, we've had public workshops, we've engaged local artists and landscape architects. And through that process, we're kind of a milestone in that process, where we've got a set of ideas now that we think we want to do, and we're in the process of taking it to the next step and turning those into designs. And that next set of slides just shows some of the ideas that came out of that. But there again, it was an opportunity, you know, that ODOT would have done certain things, but are those the right things? Are those the things that the community is interested in? Went through a process really to discover and convert that funding into something that is about the community. So that's about what I wanted to talk about in a, in a presentation. I do have a last slide that has some contact information. My, and what I would like to invite the council and the mayor to a tour of the site. If you call Mr. Lively, we can get you hard hats and orange vests and take you almost everywhere that you want to go.
I would also add that that design enhancement process originated here, mayor and council, and representing the community's interest in artistic enhancements to the bridge, and that led to urging ODOT repeatedly that we need to involve the artistic community and to this year-long process. So it's really something that started here.
Thank you for that, and thank you for the presentation, and thank you for the invitation to come visit the site. I like to do that, actually. And I haven't been there since the, I have a gold shovel, but I've got it behind you right there, that I'm waiting to use in other places. But, but anyway, I just want to say that to me, watching this process, I want to thank all the people that you've done outreach with, and I want to thank all the groups that have been involved in the community input part of this. I just think this is a, is such a improved way of going about a project of this type. It really is, is the listening to the community, the listening to the council, the listening to, the sensitivity to the environment, the telling the story, since we spend so much time really trying to capture what we've got here in this community, both in terms of arts and outdoors. I think you're bringing those things together in this, in this project. So it's really, it's just a, I think it's, it's very impressive, and I want to also call attention to and say how pleased we all are going to be with seeing our bike system enhanced as well. So just, it's, it's all very, this is, these are beautiful. This is really exciting to contemplate, so thank you so much. Really looking forward to how this, wish we didn't have to wait for two more years, but I guess we do. Others? Alan?
Great job so far on the project. Process where you have community engagement, I think is, is a great model to move forward, and we can learn from it, too. It's great. I, too, would like to do the tour some, on some time. You mentioned on the construction that the, are you going to do the southbound half of the bridge first, and then the northbound half?
Correct.
Okay, so it's going to be half and half?
Yeah. Sequencing-wise, we need the complete southbound in place to move all of the traffic over so that we can remove, remove the detour structure and build the, the northbound approximately where it is, where the, where the detour is.
Right, oh, okay. That makes sense. I, I wanted to thank all the, all the community that's engaged in this, especially David Sonnixon is here. Thanks for saving the trees, David, or suggesting we do it, and thanks for saving the trees, Dick. Some of, so this, the west, or the, the Willamette Natural Area Design Owens, this is on the north side of the river, right?
Yes.
Okay. So this is, this, that'll be right underneath the, the bridge on the north side of the river in the Willamette Natural Area. And, yes, so this is looking at the berm that goes kind of up? Is that where we're?
Correct. You'd be standing at the river, making sure I've got this for me. Yeah, looking north.
Right, that's very cool. It's very pretty, by the way. Very beautiful. The, so you, you went through these three that were highlighted on this opportunities page, but the other ones sound just as interesting, if not more. Could you just touch on them real quickly? I don't even know where, I know where the Glenwood Slough is, but where's Augusta Creek?
It's really in the same vicinity, yeah. I guess I can walk up there if that...
Sure. I'll lose the mic, it would be harder to hear me on the recordings and the transmissions, but...
There's a microphone for you right here.
Let me know, let me know I'm moving. Ah, we're good.
And I won't be able to track the exact route of these creeks, but the, but the stream enhancement that we're talking about is, is right in this vicinity right here. The slough comes in generally from this direction. Augusta Creek is the creek that used to gather all of this and really funnel it down through here, and, and this is so built over the original track, I don't think we know. But what this is intended to do is provide the, the first part of the access for fish that want to move out of the river and, and up into the system. And ODF and W's long-term hope is that eventually we, we improve incrementally the system up in here and actually create new habit, or replace or save habitat, create, recreate the habitat.
Yeah, because right now, it's kind of concrete and yucky.
It's an industrial area.
Yeah, really, it's not very attractive at all. Not very natural.
And for me, the, the opportunity that we seize there, in fact, all of those in italics were regulatory requirements that we're taking what we think is a step above and beyond. Our requirement here was to provide some sort of steps or something to get the fish from the river up to here, and instead of just accepting some artificial-looking thing, we worked with ODF and W, and, and our, our goal was a naturalized area. And so together, what we came up with is, is it's going to be a stream path made of boulders that create pools that the fish can leap in or progress up into, and it'll look like a high mountain stream is, is, and again, there's a word for that that I can't think of. But, but our goal wasn't just to create something the fish could, could maneuver, it was to create something that looked and acted and felt natural, and again, fit, fit the context.
Supposedly, concrete ladders that are like hydro facilities.
Yeah. Yeah, something that you could look at and go, hmm, somebody built that, right?
What are you doing with the mill race ruins? And do you know the history of that, the mill race?
Well, some of, we've, we've got a report, and I got to admit, I haven't read it exhaustively, but yeah, there used to be the mill race, this was an intake, and it was the intake for the mill race that now goes through campus.
Right.
The intake now, I believe, is, is a pipe intake, it's covered anyway, further down, and so this no longer really serves as the intake, but it's got all of the remnant structures out there.
Yeah.
And so there were a number of places where we impacted those structures, and our agreement that we worked out with SHPO was, we did a minimalization-type design and shifted our, our landing points to minimize our impacts. And, and we agreed with SHPO that we would provide some level of signage. And the place where we're going to go a little bit above and beyond just sticking plaques out there that, that read, is we've engaged with the art and design team for the south bank, and, and we're going to design things, design features or design information into railings on the bridge or, and I don't know exactly what they'll turn out to be, but it isn't just going to be a series of signs that in 10 years get torn down and thrown away. It'll be something that's integral that tells the story of the mill race.
Yeah, because that is very integral to our history about, the whole downtown was fed with that mill race would come right through downtown. It was a very big part of, of the original part of Eugene. So that's, I think it's very crucial to say that, I'm glad you're doing that. What's the hydroacoustic monitoring?
The hydro, I'm going to go back to my seat.
Sure.
Turn this one off. With hydroacoustic monitoring, it was an issue that came up after we had started the project, and it was, it was an environmental issue that frankly hit us out of the blue. And, and it was causing problems up on a project in Portland. And fundamentally, there's, there's a new research, a new recognition of the impacts that pile driving might have on juvenile fish and migrating fish. And so in a num- And so in some other states or a number of other states on the West Coast, there was examples of how folks tried to mitigate for that. And the place that we went above and beyond is we took a look at all of the historic research or experience. And it occurred to us that people were doing, they were trying about two or three different technologies. Some of them worked better than others. We pitched ourselves full force into building something that would really make a difference. And so Bubbleator, I think, was the name this beast got. But we've got, we literally built a steel encasement that fits down around two pile placement, or two of the piles for our temporary structure. We foam coated the inside of that to help mitigate sound getting out. And then we also had a series of smaller tubes that blew air bubbles in to further break up, help break up the sound. And so when we went to drive our first set of piles, we did some testing without the Bubbleator, with the Bubbleator, with the Bubbleator not bubbling, with a number of different tests. And what came of that is that we had, there were threshold levels that we were working to get below, and we were well below all the thresholds. And so that was when, you know, the need came up, we didn't try to just get by, we tried to fix it and think that we really came up with something that may set an industry standard.
Usable in other bridge projects.
Yes.
Could you touch on the other four non-highlighted ones?
Park Path Restoration.
Canoe Canal?
Oh, I'm sorry, Canoe Canal enhancements. And this one really predates me, my coming onto the project. But one of the things that we did know is that the Canoe Canal Bridge, we had to replace the bridges over Canoe Canal because we were changing the elevation. The bridge that's there is structurally adequate and has a long lifespan ahead of it or would, but we had to change elevation, so we had to replace the bridge.
This is the bridge near Ochs and Stadium on the north side of the river?
Yeah, just fully north from the Willamette River, yeah. And so right away, we went to, well, how can we minimize the appearance in the park? And well, that was a span that with some special beams, we knew we could just single span the whole thing, so there would be nothing sticking down or no, look the other way, no piling sticking up. And again, I wasn't in the conversations, but then that created an opportunity to re-sculpture what's under there. And we've taken full advantage of that and that Canoe Canal, the concrete trough with the beams across the top, we're going to cut that down, take the beams off, and we've got quite an extensive, what ends up being quite an extensive effort to still hold those walls up. We're bringing, opening up on the South Bank, the path is kind of proched up and we're opening and carving out some earth there. And so really, the goal was, and I believe disseminated out of the discussions with the park, is that we want to open that up as a throughway instead of a constriction that we have to get through. And I didn't include them, but we have renditions of what we intend to build that does, it's an inviting throughway again, as opposed to a constriction.
Yeah, I think that did originate with the Willamette Natural Area master plan, that there was a serenipitous connection here that the project could help realize that naturalization of the slough.
And I think he wanted you to go through the last three.
Yeah, and then the Park Path Restoration, as, you know, again, we knew we were going to impact the paths in the park and we were duty bound to replace whatever we impacted. But again, rather than just think we, decide we're just going to go back in and stamp them back where they were, we opened the discussion to, things are going to change, is there a better configuration that we can do? And indeed, we have improved. Coming off of Knickerbocker Bridge, it's quite a drop-down, but we're going to elevate that. There's that oval about intersection where everybody just comes together and we're separating the connections to a bunch of paths there, so it's easier to maneuver. We'll be extending the Bark Path under Canoe Canal as a Bark Path, as opposed to joining with the paved path and then separating again. So again, it was an opportunity, we've got to do something, let's make it better than what it was. And we engaged with, again, the parks to help us decide what that looked like. The Talking Stones, again, a part of this predates me, but what I know that we agreed, and I think it was an agreement emanating out of Citizens Planning Committee for the Willamette Natural Area, that, you know, we're in there occupying the park and taking away some of the value and freedom of people to be in certain places. And so as at least part of our mitigation for that, the natural area had a series of Talking Stones that have Kalapua words and explanations on them. So we simply agreed to add some more to that. And that actually has become fun, fascinating is probably more the word that I would use in the way that Esther Stutzman and the artists and members of the CPC select the stones and establish what they're going to say and where they're going to go. And in some places, we've put partner stones, just so that the spirit of the stone isn't there alone. And so that's, like I said, been just fascinating and interesting for me to watch. And in landscaping, we came in, again, we came out of our environmental process with a landscaping plan. And that was fundamentally just, you know, what we might approach as ODOT to stamp down in an area like this. And what we did, and it's probably been six months or more ago, but we opened up, we brought to the table, here's what we're thinking of landscaping, what's, you know, is that what we want or we want to do something better? And again, we worked that through with our citizens group. Enhanced landscaping, the place that fascinates me most is around the northbound off-ramp. You get that nice view of the industrial area. We're going to plant a bunch of trees that will grow up and cover that up. And so there are opportunities like that that we might not have thought of, but again, with our engagement, we got an understanding of what made a difference to the community.
Great, thanks. You've just certainly gone above and beyond with normal project considering. It's really great. Thank you for doing all that.
You're welcome.
Chris and then George Brown.
Thank you. I really also want to compliment you on how open and receptive you've been on this project. I can remember when I was at Willamette Lane, three years ago, we were talking about this stuff. And the CPC is something that I'm familiar with, you know, worked with, I was at Willamette Lane. The Talking Stones, the landscape conversations, all that stuff shows you how big the scope of one of these projects is, how many years it really takes. But all along that process, you've been really open to saying, what do we need to do? How do we need to put it together? How can we make this work? And so it's really made it a nice, interactive partnership to put it together. And that actually, to me, raises a question that relates to our next topic. There have been conversations about what do we name this thing once it's built? And kind of just talking for a moment about how we locally can interface with ODOT in terms of how that process can work. I understand that we can have a process at the local level to develop, you know, recommendations or names or whatever. I know that the CPC has got ideas around names and other folks have ideas around names. How does that funnel into you in terms of the vetting process for that? If everybody here at the local level has a name they really like and endorse it and recommend it to you, how does that feed into what you do?
So I'm going to recognize that I'm on delicate turf based on other discussions in the community.
I'm not trying to entrap you.
No, no. And that's, you know, that's a fair, and actually, for me, it's a great question that gives me some opportunity. And I don't know if I can officially do that, do this, but I'm going to wear two hats in the conversation. One hat is, you know, officially from ODOT's standpoint, we have a process for people to nominate names and recommend them to ODOT. And so we've described that process to, again, David Sonnixon and the CPC, and they are, and David's deeply engaged in working through the process. And fundamentally, for us, it's demonstrating local support for a name. And so when recent controversy came up around naming, what I did is I went to Jane Lee, who's the region manager, and posed her the question, what her process would be and the decision process would be around when we get this recommendation. And she actually enthusiastically said, hey, if we get community support for a name, she's going to be with us all the way and support and endorse. And right now, I would also observe that inside the department and with the commission, we're sorting out exactly how we're going to work naming in the future. And so my crystal ball isn't clear there, but I would say that a demonstration of local support and bringing that to Jane Lee, I will say I'm very optimistic. And now I'm going to take my ODOT hat off and say, you know, David's doing a great job, I think we've got a great name that emanated out of a great process. And I really support, I support the effort. And frankly, on a personal level, I support the name. It just, and maybe it's because I live with it every day, because that's our mantra around the project, but I'm very optimistic we're going to do well with this.
Good. And like I said, I didn't want to kind of back you into a corner, but because these topics are so related and they are topical right now, I appreciate your answer, I really do. And just to reinforce, ODOT's been really forthcoming, and so I think that can be a really good opportunity.
Yes.
So I do think that's a good thing.
George Brown?
Thanks. I just had a couple of quick questions about going back to the Bubbleator and the hydroacoustic monitoring. This is to protect the fish.
Yes.
I had no idea that they would be, what happens to them when you're piling, you know, pounding a pile driver, pretty intense sound waves are going out, you know that?
Yeah.
Some and they get disoriented and they can't find their way? Does it cause them pain or do they not even know?
What, the, I'm not an expert in this area, but what I understand, the thing that we're guarding against in very young fish, if they're, there is a level of acoustical wave going through the water that can burst, I believe it bursts their flotation or air sacs, and that will be fatal.
Yeah.
Yeah, their air bladder. And so there is a potential for fatality. And in, you know, approaching that, there's potential for injury. And so the ODF and, I don't know if it was ODF and W Research, but biological research has established what some of those limitations or parameters are, and then set a goal below that, so that if we can go out and measure with our hydrophones, demonstrate that we're below a certain level, then we all feel we're safe and confident. And I guess the other part of that is there has been demonstration by measurement that around big steel piles hit by really big hammers, you can exceed the threshold levels. And so the whole objective around the Bubbleator and hydroacoustic monitoring and mitigation is to keep the acoustic impacts in the water low enough that we don't affect the fish.
Yeah, well, I just know that it can be very disorienting to humans. When the library was being built, we're on the same block and boom, 12 hours a day. It was, and the building shakes after each one.
Damage air running. George can't float anymore.
It's challenging for humans.
Such respect. So I'm just going to wrap this up by thanking you so much again. You did a great presentation, and I guess I would just make the comment that this feels more like being partners in a project than having one done for us. So I appreciate that difference. And as Chris knows, we all had misgivings at the beginning of whether we were going to get a signature bridge. This feels very much like we got our signature all over the bridge. So I am really pleased, and I look at you and I can tell you've enjoyed this a lot, too. So this is all of...
Every bit of it. And what I will say is, I've pushed projects through or done projects in a lot of communities, this is the most intense partnership that I've been able to engage in. Eugene, I, everybody talks about the uniqueness and the broad perspectives in Eugene, and if you work that right, you build something bigger rather than get constrained.
That's a lovely way of putting it. Thank you very much. And I just want you to know that we're working on our crystal ball getting clearer, too. That's what's coming up in the next part of today's program. So thank you very much. The next item up is a city of Eugene naming policy. May I?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll have Beth for presentation and as that goes up.
Using this?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll take that placard down.
Yeah. Have a bridge in your way?
It's good moving.
Good afternoon, Mayor Piercy and city councillors. I'm happy to be here with you this afternoon to present the draft naming policy for your consideration. Using a very simple PowerPoint, I'd like to give you just a brief overview of the policy, provide a little information on how it was created and how we hope it will work, and give you plenty of time for comments and suggestions. The policy in front of you recognizes that it is you, the council, that has the ultimate authority in assigning legal names to city-owned facilities. Therefore, it's important that this policy reflects your collective values and preferences. While the proposed policy consists mainly of procedural steps to be taken when naming opportunities come up, at its foundation are three underlying values or core elements and several general rules and criteria. It was and will continue to be difficult to anticipate every possible contingency or scenario for how and why naming requests are received, but I tried to incorporate three main elements into each process outlined in the proposed policy. The first element is transparency. Staff will ensure that the council is notified as early as possible of any naming proposal or opportunity, and that to the greatest extent possible, this information is publicized in a way that ensures a fair, open, and inclusive process. The second element is fiscal responsibility. As we've all seen, information about what financial implications a naming proposal may have is critical to the naming decision. The council may choose to convene an ad hoc naming committee to identify and analyze the real costs associated with a proposal. If no committee is formed, staff will ensure that the council has all pertinent financial information before it makes a final decision. And the last element is public engagement. A well-publicized citizen comment period should be a component of any naming process. In the proposed policy, we have outlined several specifications for notifying the public, as well as the different methods available to us for getting the word out. Then if the need to improvise arises, it's our intent to ensure that at a minimum, these same three elements are included in any process you go through. In addition to the three core elements, the proposed policy lists several general criteria to be applied when making a naming decision, particularly when an individual's name is proposed. I won't go over all of these individually, but they include a preference to incorporate a geographical or historical reference into the name, as well as more specific monetary or public service requirements. The process I used for drafting the policy included a look at historical information, internet research, and consideration of sentiments and suggestions expressed more recently, some in reaction to specific situations like the renaming of Beltline. As several of you may remember, the council last discussed the need for a naming proposal or a policy in July 2004. I reviewed the agenda materials prepared for that meeting, which provided some background on past naming situations, and discussed the differences between naming and recognition opportunities, many of which are currently guided by existing departmental policies, and naming and commemoration opportunities which are more relevant to today's discussion. I also reviewed the minutes from that meeting, which gave me a good sense of what was important to the council at that time. For instance, the sentiment that at no time should a facility be named after a business was expressed strongly in that discussion. I then did some research on the internet and found the naming policies of several other municipalities, including a couple that had been considered by the council in 2004. I looked most closely at the policies of Anchorage, Alaska, Honolulu, Hawaii, Austin, Texas, Santa Monica, California, Kirksville, Missouri, and Chapel Hill, North Carolina. These gave me good ideas for ways to organize the policy and helped me see recurrent themes or criteria that made sense to include in ours. For example, most of the pol- For example, most of the policies included a stipulation that individuals must either be dead or retired in order to be considered for naming. And many of them also included a stated preference for geographical or historical Finally, as you know, there have been a couple of recent relatively high-profile cases that probably would have gone more smoothly if we had had a system in place. From these experiences, and from the comments you made and received from constituents, I tried to customize our process to meet the unique needs and expectations of our The next series of slides are a quick illustration of what a typical generic naming process might look like. As I mentioned before, each situation you encounter may have unique elements that require a little bit of improvising, but our intent is to follow these prescribed procedures as closely as possible while remaining flexible and responsive to your wishes and to the situation as it unfolds. The first step is the identification of a naming opportunity by staff. Pictured here is the currently under construction pedestrian bridge at Delta Ponds, which may be one of the first opportunities you'll have to put your new naming policy and procedures to use. Step two is a notification of council, and this can be accomplished via memo, announcement at a meeting, or as part of an agenda item. We didn't specify in the policy, but you may wish to consider being more explicit in the policy about how you prefer to receive that notification. The third step is the creation of an ad hoc committee. We're proposing that the council will determine the size and timeline of the committee, and the mayor will make the appointment. Once the committee is formed, the members will meet to brainstorm and explore potential names, and to examine the costs and impacts and consequences of any names that are proposed. Based on that research, the committee will then recommend a name to the council, providing information about the process they used, and an explanation of their decision. Once the recommendation has been made, a public comment period is initiated. We anticipate that comments will be submitted via email, letter, and phone, as well as in person, but felt it was important to specify in the document that the comment period will be long enough to include at least one opportunity for testimony at a public forum. Finally, the council considers all of the information and testimony they received, and makes a final decision that is hopefully universally supported and loved by all. And that's the end of my presentation. I just wanted to say it's been a very interesting exercise for me, and I've learned that we have a lot of great resources out in this community that are willing to help with any naming decisions.
Thanks for that research and presentation, Beth. Betty, you're first.
Thank you, Beth. Good job, and I think you should get paid for overtime.
She always says that.
Absolutely.
Must have taken a lot of time. I, a couple of places where I think the word renaming exists that it shouldn't is on page 10 and 25, on, this is agenda pages. On page 10, under A, the bottom checkmark, this is under selecting names for new facilities, and it says renaming. I think that's just something you got in there accidentally. You see what I mean?
Mine says naming.
Page 10, under number one, names for new facilities. No, just above number two.
Above number two. I see.
Oh, how renaming got it.
Yeah. I don't think renaming, the word didn't belong there.
Okay.
And there's another place, page 20, because this is under naming new facilities. On page 25, there's another place.
Okay.
Yeah, I see what you're doing.
And that's just, I'm sure, it's just a matter of the word being in the wrong place.
Thank you.
Okay? Then, I'm glad you said if we name after a person, they should be dead or retired. It's something I brought up on an occasion when we named something in the past, when the person, and when I got home, there was a telephone message that said, "Which do you think will happen first?" I think that's a very, very good policy, actually, when we name something for a person. I do think it should be, another comment, I don't think it should be on the consent calendar regardless of whether there's been a hearing. And in addition to letting people suggest names, I think if someone's, if someone does apply, and I liked your application form, then we should announce, let it be made public that that has been suggested, and give other people chances to suggest things, instead of just accepting the first thing that someone suggests. Then about the renaming, and that's all about naming, I would hope that we would have a policy of not renaming anything. I think that it always causes some problems. I did like it that you said, I think that was on, I forget which page you said, "Consider the consequences," and I think that's really important, consider the consequences of, to everyone, both financial and emotional and whatever else there is. That's a really important aspect of it. But I think if it's, if it's a renaming, there are almost certain to be some undesirable consequences. And I would hope that we would, I don't know how this will go, the other things you did I think are good, but I would hope we'd have a policy of not renaming anything. That's, that's all I have to say right now. Thanks.
Mike, and then Chris, and then Andrea.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, that, I too wanted to say, hey, great job. That's a lot of work. I appreciated that you went through other cities and looked at what their policies were. I appreciated what kind of in-depth work you did to compare this to other jurisdictions, and really kind of look at what's the best practice to go through here. That was really good work. I agree with Betty about the Section 2, Sub A5, about the consent calendar. I don't think this, this type of item should ever be on the consent calendar, for the purposes of public transparency, for one, and for number two, the reason, in my opinion, for naming something after someone, or renaming, as the case may be, is to give them public recognition. And I think it being on the consent calendar kind of defeats that purpose. So, I'm not really sure that's such a good idea. I did have some questions about this in a broader context. When we rename streets, the process there is in code specifically. This is more of a, of just an administrative policy. Was there any thinking about why we wouldn't want to put something about our naming policy into code? Was there a reason not to do it that way, as opposed to just create the policy?
I don't know. And the research that I saw, jurisdictions did it both ways. Some just had written policies, and some it was code, encoded.
So, no real reason to choose one over the other? Okay. And then, secondly, with the, with the street naming or renaming, it goes through an ad hoc committee of sorts that already exists in the planning commission. And I'm wondering, was there thought given to the idea of putting place or facility names through the planning commission as well? No?
I didn't, no.
Is there, I guess my, a better question is, is there a reason not to do that from staff's perspective? Is there a reason why that would get, in approach on their work plan, or be a problem of some kind?
Probably not in the sense that these aren't going to be coming through every month.
Right.
So, I don't think there's lots of them. You know, the basic role of the planning commission generally is a land use issue, which is a little bit different than a naming issue. So, there isn't any reason why they couldn't do it. But it's not necessarily a strong nexus, but I don't think there's any issue about it.
I only thought of it because of the fact that we do that with street names and/or renaming, and also because putting something like this through the planning commission kind of ensures a public hearing on the process of some nature, even though we're talking about having some public input with this. Ensuring the formal structure of the public hearing through that was an interesting idea from my perspective, so that's what, those are my thoughts on it.
Got you, Betty. Just to add to that is that I, I don't actually personally see that the hearing process brings as many people to a hearing in a planning commission than it does to the, in the council setting. Chris, you're next, and Andrea, and then Alan.
Thanks. I really appreciate the work that you did, and very thoughtful, and I think it will serve us really well. And I would have been more than happy to follow this policy in the instances I was involved in or ones I'm familiar with. I don't think the policy needs to be changed, but something to just be aware of, sometimes you can have a committee, I was, this happened to me. You can have a committee that's involved in naming something, and they can't reach an agreement on what to do. So, you might want to think about what we, what do you do when you get stuck? The committee can't come up with a name that's acceptable, how do you, how do you keep on going? And just give it some thought. The second thing, and this is also more food for thought, is I wouldn't want to completely close the door on renaming things. The reason being, there are situations where, because of things that come to light, arrests, things like that, it may be in your best interest to consider it. I think the point that I would agree with Betty on is you don't want to get into recycling names, where we use this name until some better deal comes along, and then we just change the name arbitrarily. I don't think, I think if you're going to talk about renaming things, it has to be under very extraordinary circumstance. So, it doesn't become just a standard practice. We name it this until the money runs out, and then we name it something else. You don't want to do that. I think you really have to have a very clear circumstance under which you would trigger a renaming consideration, but not just for any old purpose.
Andrea?
Well, thanks, Beth. This is good. And I'm glad that you went on the internet and didn't take road trips to the different jurisdictions. I appreciate your, your staying within the guidelines of your budget.
Yeah, Alaska and Honolulu.
So, I really like the endorsing proposal part of it. I think that that's, thank you for that, because I think that that's where we get probably a lot of input into things that we really don't have any say-so, and people just ask us, so I'm glad that that's there. As far as the process goes for this, I'm in supportive of a committee that gets appointed. I'm hoping that, I'd like to hear other people's idea about the mayor appoint. I just, I don't have a problem with that, but I just think it'd be nice to be able to have some say-so in who's there. I want to make sure that it's geographically and demographically diverse of the people that are there from different reasons. I don't have a problem with the person, the renaming being somebody who has passed or retired, that that's, that's fine. And then the process that they will use, I'm just curious, do you envision that they're going to go through a process themselves, that the committee itself go through, create their own process, or is staff have an idea of how they're going to want to move through that?
Well, I think the council would set up kind of the parameters.
Okay.
And until we get probably the first one under our belts, it might be, we'll probably learn from that.
Okay. And I just kind of want to make a comment about this. Actually, this is one of the reasons that I ran for city council, was because when, I don't know the sequence of events, I don't know how it all came about, but it was when Martin Luther King Boulevard, when the community had asked, or when the community had proposed the name change on that street, and there was, seemed to be a lack of understanding as to why it would be so important. And I have had people approach me about naming, renaming streets, and, you know, what our process is, and I've told them, well, we're going to be working on this, so I don't really know. So, so let's think about that. And so, I think our demographics are changing, I think people need to feel like they have ownership in this city, and I think that people, young people coming up, want to see a piece of their history here. This is Eugene, it was founded by Eugene Skinner. People have different views of what his roles were, and what his beliefs were and values at that time, and it's a changing world. And so, I just want to make sure that this is, that we are cognizant of that, that there, that our demographics are changing, and that people are going to be requesting and looking at, how do they put their footprint or their thumbprint on our city, and make it feel like it's part of their city.
Alan?
Good job, Beth. I'm also glad you didn't do all that travel. Miracle of the internet. I agree with the folks that said that renaming should be an infrequent and unusual circumstance. I think we should reflect that in this policy as a change, and be as specific as you can that that should be a not usual and recycling kind of event. Question I had about the ad hoc committee for major ones, do any of the jurisdictions just use existing standing committees? I mean, we have numerous ones, and, I mean, we could go down that ad hoc group. I was wondering your trade-offs between using, say, the planning commission, or the human rights commission, or the, you know, whatever, the existing committee that we have versus doing an ad hoc one.
Yeah, I don't remember which jurisdiction, or if there were more than one, but I do know that at least one had a naming committee that was...
Permanent?
Permanent.
Oh.
That was their job.
It's a growth community.
Must be Coachella.
Apparently. With lots of money to spend on new things.
But it seemed like there might be kind of different interests depending on what was being named. We'd maybe want different, they would have different stakeholders and just different interests, so.
As opposed to just running it through the planning commission?
Right.
Or the sustainability commission, or the budget committee, or anything like that? Because they're already, I mean, the advantage is they're already established, and wouldn't have to go through all that process, but we don't make that many major things anyway, so I guess it's not a real problem. Can you show where in the policy it talks about the cost? I noticed it in endorsing, endorsing proposals from other jurisdictions on page 13 of the packet, page five of the policy, it has, including financial costs. Does that show up? I couldn't really see that showing up there. Does it show up in all of the different times we would go through a naming process?
Trying to remember if it's just in this really general area where they, we talk about using, using an ad hoc naming committee. Doesn't really mention financial implications there, but that might be the right place to do that.
Yeah, or we might want to add it in, we have these different sections about procedures for naming new facilities, the existing facilities, and staff-initiated, and endorsing other jurisdictions, council-initiated. And we have specific points or information that we're supposed to bring back. I think it would be helpful to add the financial implications or costs in each of those sections.
Okay.
That's an adder. And then, on page 12 of the packet for the policy, staff-initiated requests, it says, "Renaming or naming of public meeting rooms and subsections of city facilities will be made by city manager." That seems really vague to me, subsections of city facilities. What does that mean?
A re-naming?
A slot room?
Right.
That's a, that's a meeting room.
Right.
So, public meeting rooms, I got that. But I don't know what subsections of city facilities means.
An alcove? I don't know. It might be...
Desk.
You know, I suppose if you, I don't know if you can name a, a library shelf, would probably be a subset of something, chairs, and the hall center, people, you know, get their chairs named after them, those kinds of things.
Okay. I think we could use a better definition than that, so that's a little bit more clear, since it's not. And, what was the last one? Oh, on page 13, five of the policy, endorsing proposals from other jurisdictions, a minimum of six councillors voting in for it is required. Was that pretty common among the other jurisdictions, that it was kind of a little bit more than a majority, but not as?
I don't remember even seeing it specified anywhere, but given just sort of controversial nature some of the proposals have, was a number that I expected you to maybe discuss and decide if that's where you wanted to land.
Yeah, I think the two options are just simple majority, or, or six councillors, it's kind of like a supermajority.
Do you want another round?
Sure.
George Polling?
First of all, I'll speak to what Alan just finished up on, is the minimum of six councillors. I don't see why it needs to be that. I mean, just a simple majority is, will work. And also now, it seems like most of the discussion is focusing around the ad hoc committee. And I too have some concerns about making sure we get the right demographic and geographic representation involved in the naming, the ad hoc committee. You know, and I don't, I don't know about leaving it all up to the mayor as opposed to doing a formal selection process, but if it could be outlined in there somewhere that the ad hoc committee consists of representatives from the organization, or people that are suggesting a name change, as well as people that live in the immediate area where the change is going to occur, whether it be a new park, a street, or whatever, but I think it's, it's important that you have a good representation from, from that area. If they were saying, to say they're going to name Willackenzie Road... If they were, say, to say they're going to name Willikenzie Road for one reason or the other, I mean, you've got the high school, you've got a couple of shopping centers, so you've got businesses, you've got schools, you've got all kinds of residential areas in there, and actually that goes through two neighborhood associations. So I think it's real important that that ad hoc committee focus on where the road or building or whatever it is being name changed, that they be represented.
Stakeholders, membership.
Yeah.
Good point. I was just going to, I think you probably all read the email we got this week, speaking of what Andrew was talking about, where somebody once again was bringing up the renaming of Centennial, so it doesn't, those renaming opportunities don't go away, they live in, sometimes they live in infamy, so it's something for us to cogitate on as we do this. And I was wondering if on page one of this Eugene naming policy, listening to what Andrew was saying, whether in third paragraph, when you list naming facilities to incorporate geographic, natural, historic, geologic feature, you might want to add demographic. Or reflecting the changing demographics of the community. You may not. I'm just bringing it up for a place where you...
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand.
That would be, I think what, Andrew can speak to it better than I can, but I think what she's saying is if you see some population differences, that would really like to see some people who are representative of their communities' names moving forward as one of the criteria for where you name something, that you take that into consideration as you make your choices. You're just looking at who your community really is and that people like to see themselves reflected in name choices. Second round, Betty, Mike, Alan. Betty.
Thank you. I want to respond to some things other people said. But Kitty already said what I wanted to say about the Planning Commission, I think. I don't think that it's appropriate for this to go, for renaming to go through the Planning Commission, and as Kitty said already, our public hearings are much more watched and participated in than the Planning Commissions. Personally, I don't think we need a committee. I think this council could be the committee. We are a diverse, geographically representative community to start with, and I don't think we need a special committee. And also, what we do is more open or more available to people. Alan's, in response to Alan's talking about financial consequences, on the attachment C, which is the hypothetical application, number three says consequence, consider the consequences. And I think that includes financial consequences. I don't think we need a special place for consequences. That's, if you consider consequences, that would be include money or any, and the people who live there, changes of addresses if it were renaming, and all of those things. And also, I hope that every time one of us suggests something, that that isn't becoming a part of the policy without more discussion, even if I suggest it. I wouldn't mind if that did, but I think that's all. Thanks.
Mike.
Thank you. Yeah, Alan and Betty touched on one issue that was important to me, and I actually think differently than Betty does. I think that financial impacts need to be a specific part of each of these sections. I think we absolutely have to be clear about both internal and external financial impacts anytime we change the name or add the name of something. So for example, when we did do the change of MLK, there were a number of businesses on that street, and it had external financial impacts on those businesses with regard to the cost for changing over their materials and their, the things that they did. And that, that's something that isn't necessarily good or bad, it's just something that I think we need to be specifically aware of before we make that decision. So I'd like to see that as a very specific part of each of these sections. And then when it comes to forming a motion here for us to move forward, I've heard several things, the financial impacts, the consent calendar issue, the simple majority issue as opposed to all, and then this ad hoc committee and how it's composed and whether there should be one. So I'm not exactly sure how to form the best motion here for moving forward.
There isn't a request for a motion today. It's a...
All right, all right, all right. Okay.
Alan?
Thank you for that, by the way.
They're saving us from ourselves.
You know, I was thinking about the council, simple majority versus six councillors, and I kind of like the six councillors part because it takes it out of just the simple majority realm of maybe political swings, and it makes it a little bit more unanimous, and they have to be together a little bit more in order to name someone and collaborate more. So I kind of, I think when push comes to shove, I think I'd like to see it stay with six councillors. I agree with the other comments that people made about not being on the consent. I think that's not in the spirit of this. It's about publicizing the name, so let's make it, sometimes we pull stuff off the consent just to talk about them because we want them to be publicly known, so consent sometimes gets done without any public comment or council comment. That's all I had.
Jennifer.
Yes, I, Beth mentioned, oh, thank you, Beth, for this presentation. You mentioned early on that we might have an opportunity here in the near future. And I guess my question's to John, is the bike bridge being built over Delta Highway, is that a federal job with all the federal dollars in it, or is that going to be our bridge when it's all over? And will it be up to us to name it? Because if it's a federal job, like the Belt Line was a state entity, we didn't get a say in the matter.
I believe it's ours, but I'll have to verify that for sure.
Okay, thanks.
I'm thinking about what Alan said, I would just suggest you think about this, that if you're actually in a case that you would name something after a person, the last thing you want to do to somebody that you want to honor is have a big fight over their name choice, and so the closer you can come to a strong support is, would be felt better by the person that you're choosing to honor than to have it be a...
Contentious.
A four-four split with a man break.
Yeah, right.
Even if they're dead.
Even if they're dead.
Or even more specifically.
Or families exist, or, you know, I think, I was just asking you to think about it from the other person's point of view, and that might affect how you think about the vote, if you think about what it is you're trying to do and who might be affected by it, and how that might feel to them. So just that thought.
I agree with that. I think it should be at least six, it'd be better if it were eight people, because you're right, if their family, and if they're dead, even more, they might be even more sensitive to, we're talking about six people. Half of them think it's good, and half of them don't. If we ask Mr. McNaught to put down his cigar, we might offend somebody.
I think that's pretty much it for this discussion. Do you have anything else you want to get before you go back, try to take all this information and bring it back?
I've got what I need. Hopefully you'll be seeing a...
Thanks again, Beth, very much. Good job. Appreciate it. Thank you, everyone.
I think we're unanimous in thinking Beth did a good job.